All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Good to see you all. I see we've got at least five board members on, so and it is one o'clock, so we will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Good afternoon, board colleagues, Dr. Stebbelfield to all of our staff and to anyone who is watching our special board meeting this afternoon. So thank you for joining us today. It is, what's today? Wednesday, July 27, 2022, 1:00 p.m. And we'll go ahead and get this meeting started. So again, thank you for joining us. I know Mr. Goheen is unable to join us today, but he has someone from his office who is joining us in case we have any legal questions that we would need to ask, but he may join us a little later this afternoon if he's able to, but I know we do have some representation from MVP today. So with that, I'll go ahead and read our board norms and protocols as we do at every board meeting. We agree to respect differences of opinions and making decisions for the district to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business in the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. So with that, again, good afternoon and thank you all for making time. I know it's a very busy time of the year for our administrators and for all of our staff, and I know Central Office is hopping this week with lots of workshops and presentations going on, so I've heard great things about that, and so just thank you to everybody who's a part of that and making sure that that is going off super well, and thank you to everybody who's participating in that. So with that, I would ask Ms. Smith to please do a roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries here.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Great, thank you. Would narrate a motion to approve today's special agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. So we'll jump right into our agenda. First item on the agenda is recommended to approve today's HR report. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
I seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Jumping into our next agenda item is a our board discussion 3A regarding our budget. So I will go ahead and pass along to Dr. Stebbelfield. Again, board, hopefully you had a chance to review the material that was available to you online. I know there was a survey that was sent out. I believe some, most of the board members were able to complete that. If you haven't, Dr. Stebbelfield can give us a little bit more direction, but I would still encourage you to complete that even if you weren't able to today. I think it would be helpful for the, for staff to see the board's perspective. So if you haven't had a chance to do that, please make sure you complete that survey. I think it would still be helpful to compile that information. Again, you had some access to the drives that had all of the board, the budget for the district, including the department budgets. So today, and I know we've had some questions come through regarding the budget, so hopefully we'll be able to address some of those today as well. Anything that we can address, or if there are more questions, please make sure that we share those and then we'll get those answers out to the full board. If there's something that staff isn't prepared to answer today, we'll make sure that we have that. So again, really just again, purpose today is really to go through our, our budget and have, try to answer any of the department budgets, questions that, that the board may have and to continue to give some direction to our leadership. So with that, I'll pass it to Dr. Stebbelfield and to staff to facilitate this conversation.
Good afternoon. I, I've been having some issues with Zoom and internet, so if I freeze, just tell me and I'll be happy to repeat it. Before we jumped into the department budgets and the budgets, I did just want to say we have all of the responses and the board doesn't have to move to approve this until we do the final budget, but we have all the responses from the building leaders around the building needs assessments and the board has access to that. In the survey that I sent out, and I see that several of the board members have my screen if you like, but one of the things that the board will have to do and based off your responses, and I can put it together and have it at a future board meeting. I would say I was going to bring forth, here's what the board has said in response to the different questions and to, just to make sure that you all were on the same page with the responses. In some cases, you have selected the same items, so in that case, you know, it'll be easy to combine, but purpose of me sending that out is so that you could have an opportunity to ask any questions around that from us and then, and/or any discussion you may wanted to have around the three questions that we'll have to have in our minutes that the board, this was the board's response to it. So I'll pause to see if there are any questions for me. And I'll, I can share my screen.
Yes, Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Stebbelfield, so help me understand what you sent us was a what was what you sent us? Let me ask it like that.
So we got guidance from KSD in Green Bush on how to have the board to respond to the question. We could have an open discussion and you could respond, but they also sent like a list of barriers that has been identified by, and barriers that our staff had identified. And then they also sent like some starters for the each question around how long it will take to move that. So what I said so the board could put whatever they want to on that line was just a way to start the conversation and to compile the information. So when the board has to go on record and say, this is how we address those three questions, we would have one document that the board had come to consensus on our agreement with.
Okay, so you froze at the start, yeah, at the beginning of your sentence, so. I'm going to start.
Oh, sorry. IT is watching. I don't know why I'm freezing. I'll turn my camera.
Let me ask it a different way. Do we have a list of responses from our building leaders, our teachers, our staff, our administrators?
Yes, that is in the building needs assessment folder and it's a document that says, I'll pull it up and share it.
Yes, please. Because my response was none of the board members are in the classroom. None of us know the K through 12, 19,000 students. So those, we were shooting in the dark. In my opinion, anybody answering is a shot in the dark. We have no data to answer those questions.
So you, we went through all of the building needs assessments and my understanding from what, but you may have a different understanding. My understanding from what KSD shared with each building has to answer the questions and then the board has to come to a collective response and the board has to have a response.
The only thing, only thing we received was the staff needs. We didn't receive the needs if they needed what we really, but let me say it like this. We did not receive answers to those three questions by each building.
It's right here. It was in the building needs assessment folder and I shared that link when I shared that, like when it's, so if you go into the, let me go back. So in the building needs assessment folder.
Dr. Stebbelfield, I'm sorry, just FYI, we, at least I'm just seeing the desktop. If you're sharing something different, we're not seeing that. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I may switch to Don's computer, but I will share my screen again. Sorry.
Okay, so you saying on the building needs assessment in that third link you sent, there was more data from the principals updated from what we received before?
Yes. So this document right here is all of those, the three questions and we added a 2A to show what resources, but so here's where they, can you, are you seeing this right screen now?
Yes.
Okay, so the first question and it's every school and it's, it's in that folder and then the second question.
Okay.
Added a 2A. And then there is what, and that's their third answer to that. So each building has to answer the question, which they did, and then to come to have a response to that, but if that, if, if that is not.
They're going in and out. So each building had to answer the question and then that was what I heard you last say.
Each, and the board members have to answer the question together. So every building has to have a response and so does the board.
Mr. Lopez, I don't know if she's talking or not talking. I guess I keep getting thrown off by that. And I, I apologize if Dr. Stebbelfield, if you could go back to the folder, if you're still there. Can you tell me what document, where in the folder I'm seeing the document? Cause I'm in the folder.
So in, can you hear me? I'm gonna switch to a computer, a different computer in a second. And when I go in, it says K-12 Building Principles. It's a Excel spreadsheet.
The only document I'm seeing on my end because I have to go to the folder first. So when I type in building needs assessment folder, I'm seeing a folder that said that like the first document is the KSD document.
I don't, I don't know how your drive is arranged. I'll make sure, but I'm most certain we give access to you all.
Okay.
Folder. I'm freezing. Okay. I'm, I'm logging off, but I won't be able to share.
I will say that the building needs assessment folder, the board members do have access to. And inside of it, there's a 22, 2022 dash 23 folder and that has all the individual building needs assessments in them.
And this is Lisa Walker. I would just add that in that 2022, 23 folder, if you open that up, then there's a document that says 1-k-12 Building Principal Responses to Three State Assessment Budgetary Questions for Board Consideration. That's the sheet that Dr. Stebbelfield's showing.
And it's only now that I'm seeing that, so. Thank you.
Thanks for your patience, everyone. I see Dr. Stebbelfield's logged on at a different computer, so. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Stebbelfield, you're trying to log on. Were they, did they have the same survey? Because it's like duplication from, for that. You know, Pat answered.
Can you all hear me? I can't hear.
Yes, we could.
So Dr. Nguyen, I think to Dr. Nguyen's question, it looks like one and two were the questions that were asked. And then three is, is the duplication from the initial needs assessment document. And of course, four is where Dr. Stebbelfield said, told the staff that they would not respond to that question, that it would be a question of that her team would come up with. So am I understanding that principals and those staff were only asked questions one and two and three was taken from the needs assessment? Cause it looks as though that question came from the staffing request from the other document.
Where's your video?
Oh.
Sorry, I was switching with Dr. Campbell. There are some internet issues in my office. So I heard your question. Actually, the staff, the principals did go back and make a selection based off what they knew for the last question. We did, once we give them the parameters, we did shift that. And then the staffing part is what you saw in the building needs assessment. Based off what they requested this year, but it also includes the things that they requested in the previous years that they already had. So like last year, there were seven additional interventions added and there were additional things allocated to SEL and there were additional teachers added to reduce class size. So it's accumulation of those things, but for this year's budget, those were the, the things that were highlighted or the things that were new and/or were continuing depending on the building situation.
So I guess my question, now that I see this information would go back to solution based and upon initial just glance view, attendance is huge, is a lot of the principals are talking about attendance. I know that we have the partnership that we're in with Turn the Page, United Way, Red Apple, all of that, but what else are we doing? Because what I hear, when I look at this and over everyone saying attendance, is that enough? Or what other things do we need to be doing within the budget that will address attendance issues? And I've brought it up before around attendance initiatives, incentives, things that we can do to encourage students, sports and partnerships and those things being one, but how do we proactively change the narrative to maybe it's just addressing attendance in this budget because that is the biggest thing that I'm seeing upon initial review, but what are we doing that are solution oriented that just aren't people that aren't based in people? Solution. So that would be my thought and question.
So I will say this, what you see, what we presented with our partnerships are at the district level. Each building are addressing that within their, their allocated budgets in different ways. I can't speak to that specifically, but that is a focus and that's why they've highlighted and they, they may be doing different, they're doing different things at different buildings. But what they were asking for with, when we did the building needs assessments are the things that they currently cannot cover or they already don't have in place within their budget. One of the things that I think we, we have to remember is last year was the, after being out of school for, you know, all of the time for COVID, last year was the first year that they were in for the entire time. So there were things that buildings requested with a previous, I mean, with the board previously that they didn't get a chance to fully implement either last year for different reasons that they will be doing this year. They didn't ask for those things. Again, if they were doing some sort of incentives or things like that. If we wanted to, on a district level, to have some sort of incentive base around attendance, that is absolutely an option. I just want to be clear that within the budget that each building is allocated, they are doing different things in regards to that, if they identified that. And then within their, and Lisa Walker, you can chime in, but within their school improvement plans, when they've identified those things, they also have SMART goals and plans around to address that and their school improvement plans are what drove their building needs assessments.
So are we, so if they're doing incentives or those types of things, are we tracking that at a district level to see who's doing something and it's working? How, what are the metrics for that? And I guess that's why I come from it at a district level of addressing attendance because you know, principals and administrators and they can turn their wheels trying to do those things, but it not be moving the needle and not be working for our kids. And there may be one school where it's working and that should be replicated in other like schools or buildings. And so I guess I, I, I won't keep going down this rabbit hole, but I, I really want to look at that attendance piece if that's what the majority is saying they need.
Right.
Yeah. Dr. Stebbelfield, I can respond a little bit additional information. We absolutely use the information that we get from their needs assessment to look for patterns at the district level to speak to, I think, your point, Ms. Russell. If multiple schools are having the same issue, then we need to address that at the district level, right, and provide support there. And so that is where you see some of those partnerships you referenced that were put into place last year. And then if there are some specific things that schools are doing beyond that and they're getting those results, we are tracking that information. Our new executive director of DARA, Dr. Conrad, we just had a conversation this past week about looking at what's happening from district support programs and then what's happening with each campus through their school improvement plan. We've talked about sitting down and having one-on-ones with a group of us with principals to review just those specific things you've been talking about. So that if something is netting and yielding a great result at one campus, how can we then duplicate that, right, and move it to scale at others? So that, that is in progress kind of through our KISA work at the district level, addressing those district level patterns that we know we need to provide support on. And then all the way down to the school improvement plan campus level, based on what's happening there.
So have we seen each school's improvement plan?
I, I mean, we haven't presented it at the board level, but you absolutely can have access to it. It is through. Go ahead.
I believe there was access given perhaps before my arrival for viewing permissions. There is a viewer credential that board members and district level individuals can use to view all school improvement plans. So I can certainly make that available so that you have that.
You know, what, what kind of is interesting is that when we're asked to do something and to your credit, many of the staff say, you know, we've done this and we do it here, we do it there, we do it there. But it doesn't seem to be in a, in my opinion, a coherent cohesive model, I guess. And, and I'm, I'm having, I'm struggling with that something is done over here, but it's not done over there. And it's just, and I know Lucian, stop, stop, Phil, you've got a tie a bunch of loose ends, but go ahead. I don't, I'm not chairing the meeting, so I can't acknowledge Ms. Campbell.
We're in the same space, sorry. So I'm getting a echo. I don't know if you, are you getting the echo on your end? Okay.
Well, anyway, I made my point, so. We'll figure this out, but it's.
No, and, and Dr. Nguyen, to your point, they, I mean, one of the things is, I mean, it's an acknowledgement. It came up in the environmental scan. You got, I'm like the sixth person in four years. And so there are things that were put in place that are we, we are working to streamline that. But however, the school improvement plan is, is a requirement by the state, so that's been pretty consistent. All of our school improvement plans are in the, we house them in CanStar. One of the things I think that will help us going forward and we can absolutely, board members don't have viewing access, give viewing access and make all of those things accessible to board members. But one of the things that will help me and to, for me to help our team moving forward is when we look at the strategic plan and we look at the KISA goals and those kinds of things is to outline exactly when you would like to see these things. Like we do the academic and data reports, we'll do them quarterly this year. But the information that we are providing there is coming from the data points that Dr. Campbell and her team presents and those things are driven by their school improvement plan. So an assumption on my part was the board collectively knew and understood that those school improvement pens exist. They look at them every year. They work with their building leadership teams who work within the POCs at each grade level or department to make sure that all staff has some input into it. They have regularly a building leadership team meetings and that is what in the end drives within the building needs assessments that you actually are seeing. We, we just have to like have some clarity around within the number of board meetings that we have or how often the board is wanting to see those kinds of things and we can do a better job when we're presenting of referencing where that information is coming from and then also making sure that you have access to that information.
And this will be my last comment for this minute. When you all presented the KISA report, there were so many positive attributes that USD 500 performed. And as a board member, I had never heard any of those, not any, many of those strategies, you know, grade level things. I mean, that would be the first, if not oral presentation, that document that you presented to the state. You know, the board members need to see that just for our own information.
We do have planned for, I think, is, is it October, Ms. Walker? We just got that all the information back in the state response. We will do another KISA report in October based off what the state says and what we need to have. But again, when we share that at the board meeting and then when board members were able to come, that is something again that I thought more members have access to, but if you don't, and if you want it in a more formal way than what it was done, we absolutely can do that. We are, I'm reading this from Dr. Campbell. We are creating, Chris, she's working with her team to create processes to ensure the documents that are being used are consistent and that we can have something to provide and review on a monthly basis. And we can definitely make that available to board members if it's not already available.
It's a data dashboard template, Dr. Nguyen, that has addressed many of the areas that you talk about attendance, looking at our academic. So what you are, we are finding is yes, documents have been created that have been required, but they're created and then not reviewed again until it's time to come back. So really utilizing that data each month to determine the progression that is taking place to determine at each building level. to determine at each building level that is working, so that we can either adopt it, as Ms. Russell, you stated collectively, and tweaking it. Because again, it's not always a one-size-fits-all for our buildings. But to make sure if this is working, what components of this can we take to make it work for our other buildings in all areas? So that document, it's a one-pager that will be expected to be reviewed monthly with building administrators that hit on all of the, many of the areas within their school improvement plan for them to verify and determine again what's working, not waiting until a full year has gone by and stating we don't have, we haven't made the progress that we thought. So those are some of the things we're putting in place that, and, and it's not if we want to do it, these are the things that we will do consistently across the board because we recognize there's been some gaps in information that is left.
Yeah, I think, I, you know, I, I agree. I think, you know, as you guys are, as you all are working through some of those systems, you know, there are some really exciting things that, that have been going on. And I know, you know, COVID had a huge interruption, a lot of the, the work that was being done, but around the restorative justice practices that we're training all of our staff in and how we, how we work with our students and with our staff and families, the work in trauma-informed schools initiatives and what that's doing. And we know the, the, the trauma that our, our, our students and families face. And, and that is a, a very long-term plan to have impact. And, but, but I think district-wide, you know, we, we've adopted that and we're, we're training folks in, in, in how to, how to meet our students and families where they're at. And, and that should have some impact on, on not just academic performance, but attendance as well in many other areas. You know, I think about our Parents as Partners program, which was going strong up until COVID and, and some other initiatives that we're doing as a district to engage our parents and our families in, in the work. So I, I do think that there's a lot of strong progress that we've made in some of these areas as a district. So not just at the, at the building level, but I, I do think, you know, staff has been working hard to identify how we, how we're consistent throughout the district and, and some of the initiatives that are happening at, at a building level. And to your point about identifying what's working in some spaces and, and replicating or what's not working and making sure that we find opportunities to, to improve in those areas as well. So, but good, good conversation around that. Thank you.
And I, then I did, I just checked because I was looking back. So I thought the board did receive the full KISA report before we shared it with the KISA team. If you go back and look at Board Docs, when I think it was in the first March meeting or the last February meeting, it was attachment in, to that, I think it was a part of the academic update, but the entire KISA report was there. Or we sent it to the board before we shared it with the OBT team. And that's the outside dissertation.
Well, the amount of, the number three question is, is still a problem. And if, if all the staff did was check one of the boxes, then it's going to take some more mental power to come up with, in my opinion, answer other than what we do, we measure, and what does it say? It, it, it doesn't answer the question. It doesn't even act like you gave it some thought. And again, it may be an impossible question, but educators who have on-the-ground knowledge, you, in my opinion, you have a better grasp of, of this question.
I don't disagree with you that we, like we share with you, we gave the staff starters. Some of them added things to it, some of them selected. But that portion for the staff, we'll go, we'll continue to work with them and tweak and they can add what they add. But my understanding, and Dr. Wen, you may have a, you may be able to clarify, is the board has to answer that question as well as a board. The staff has to answer it, each building has to answer it. And then they all may not necessarily, like it all may be a culmination of all of those things, but the board has to be on record of saying, here's our response to that. So.
Question one, two, and three, that's correct. So thank you, yeah.
I know there were a few board members who still needed to complete it. What I think, and then we can move to the department budgets. I think as the board, the rest of the board members do that, I will, we can pull it together and just have all of it in one document and share it, or where there is overlap or consensus, try to narrow into, here's a collective response from the board. I can bring it back to the board. The next time we discuss budget, I can send it out to you before and see, and then you can, at the next board meeting, either say, yes, this we all agree, or I think we need to add that or take that away. So we'll just take all that information and put it together for you.
Yeah, and if I could request, similar to how the building principals responded, and we see all of their responses, as you're pulling it together, I would like to see a tab of what other board members said or took away. I think that's helpful for also understanding kind of the thought process behind other board members and, and what they're thinking our greatest needs are, especially as we head into goals and strategies. I think this survey, for me personally, Dr. Wen, the way I answered was based off of the disciplinary data, the academic data that was presented a couple of months ago, as well as utilizing and taking thoughts from what I saw in the needs assessments and using, utilizing that as my framework for answering those questions. I think had I had this document or known that this other document was there, I think I could have made even better informed decisions. But I took, using the information that has been provided to us, that is how I answered those questions. And I would just encourage other board members who have not answered the questions to, it's really short, it's not very long. And so if you could put that on your priority list, I think the staff would appreciate that as well as it will help us move this along as well.
And I agree, I did not have this doc, I did not see this document because it was there. But the way I was reading the survey, it was check the box. And if you didn't check, you had other. And it's like, well, no, wait a minute, it doesn't even make sense. You know, these were like pat answers like this, which, how is it best framed? Well, that's, that's not, it was too cookie cutter for thinking, what do the kids really need? So, again, I'll, I'll look closer at this, but yeah, we, and, and once again, this is, this is so important that, you know, I, I don't like super meetings every day, but this could be just a, a time we, as a board, we sit down and deal with this. This deals directly with the educational needs of our students, which that is supposed to be our first priority. And then cut and dry instead of adding to everything else.
So I will share that our principals answered all of those questions before they got the checkboxes. And then we sent them the additional ones in case they dropped something. And then we added anything that they had left. So they answered the questions individually before they left for their summer break. They answered the, the first two questions. And then the third question, we collectively as a district did give them that, but they, their barriers and their needs, they did that on their own, independent of that survey. So I just wanted to be on record of saying, our principals did do that. We did, did go back and offer that list in case they are like, oh yeah, I didn't think about that. And we added that to what they had already come up with independently, on their own. So, um, we, I, I don't know how you all want to proceed with. I did get some questions that I did, why I was able to share out with some of the different departments. And I got some questions about my budget. I, the answers that we received, I did share out with all of the board members if there were questions that came in after, closer to the board meeting time. I don't know if those individuals have been able to see their email or to look at those questions. But I would be happy if, I, I don't, I don't know if you want to start with those questions or how you want to proceed with what we shared. The presentation that is included on Board Docs is what we are recommending for the budget. We're not asking for approval of those, but the budget today. It is an opportunity to ask questions. The one thing we will, I will request that the board at least take a motion on so we will have some direction and know how to move forward is the line for the increase for administrators' salary for next year because they have been in their continuing contract and we are in a new fiscal year. And we haven't made any, any sort of adjustments because there has not been a motion made to move forward with the recommended administrator cre, increase. Otherwise, we can answer any other questions about the individual department budgets.
Well, I just started, Mr. Lopez and Dr. Doublefill and the rest of people. I just started at the, the top of the, the departments. And that's where I then sat here and asked, were different line items looking for cost savings? And I put in the email of why, we know two reasons for cost savings. And then I want to address what Dr. Stubblefield just said. But the, my, I guess my main question is, Dr. Stubblefield, which set of numbers are we using? I look at your presentation for the department budgets and, and departments have one 22, 23 budget figure. And then I look at the department budgets in the M drive or whatever, and there's another figure. So which figure are we using?
I believe, and Tracy, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that the one in the M drive has the increase in insurance costs included in it. And the one that is on there didn't. That, so that was just an error on that the increased insurance cost was not included on the document that is in the presentation, correct?
Yes, that is correct. So we just knew we were going to keep the department budgets the same. And so that's what I did in the presentation. And then when we started adding them to the Google Docs, that's actually what we will use to upload into Business Plus. So I went ahead and updated the cost of health insurance that went up to $7,668 per year per employee. So I did update that one thing on each individual department budget that was not included in the spreadsheet or in the presentation.
Okay, so then my question to you, Dr. Stubblefield, and I apologize, I had connectivity issues when you introduced your pay increase data. So what do you, could, would, do you mind explaining again those numbers? Or is that something to see?
The 3% increase for administrators? Is that what?
Well, whatever you're talking about administrative pay increase.
Well, we, the recommendation was 3%, and it was based off of where we were following with the other employee groups and where administrators. And in comparison, we didn't put a whole, this is what everybody around us is making because you all saw that last year. But in order to keep us in close comparison of where we are now, that's where, that was the recommendation based on what is being given to other employee groups and what our peers around us, where they landed and what they're making.
So you're talking about 3% based on the last sheet we saw?
Which, what, 3% from what? And so I just want to be clear, it doesn't mean it, it's the average of 3% and it's based off where administrators are currently. Yes, it'll be a 3% increase. So like for hourly employees, when they were bumped up to $15 an hour and those kind of things, that was the, the average of that was about 4%, but some people got closer to 6%. I'm saying for administrators, it will be 3%.
So I want to be clear, when you said people around us, I thought we discussed people around us were giving 1% raises. I guess I just want to be clear that I'm following in the same conversation.
Yeah, no.
Think the other.
Right.
Open.
I'm saying, so.
Is, is.
The recommendation was in alignment with what other employee groups are, certified employee groups and our classified employee groups are getting. And then when you look at it collectively, other districts did give either, I mean, some gave three, anywhere from 1 to 3%. But when we looked at comparatively where we were and to stay competitive, that's where the 3% recommendation came from.
I guess my question is, but wasn't that the argument last time? When we gave everyone the, because they hadn't had raises for five years and then to be competitive? And so now you're saying if we don't give 3%, we're no longer competitive again? Although we gave big chunks last year?
So here's what I think you need to separate the two. Last year was to bring them close to market. And if we want to continue to have our administrators to be at market, you can't not, so if you stop giving them raises or you don't do what's to keep us competitive with market, when we look at it, it's 3%. And it, and I looked at what was being given to other employee groups.
I, I.
The board, the board is.
Lo, Mr. Lopez, I guess, what I heard before was that we cannot compare employee groups to apples to apples. Like, we can't do that. That's what I heard the board collectively say previously. So I, I, I'm taking away the, the other employee groups got a 3% raise. You know, we gave our classified staff $15 because that's what we know is right to be able to, to, to somewhat live in today's, to be able to, you know, afford the cost of living. The, what happens in the negotiated agreement, that's completely separate from the administrators. And so I guess I'm just trying to clarify, when we're doing this, is this a prac, if we're saying we're doing it because of other employee groups and we're saying we're doing it to stay competitive, is this the practice in which we are now saying we're going to compare apples to apples when we're doing this? And I guess, because I feel like I, we get, we, we, we change sides depending on what conversation we're in. And that, to me, seems frustrating, not only for our employees, but also frustrating for me as a board member because I'm told we're not comparing apples to apples, but the reasons being said to give the 3% now is comparing apples to apples. So.
I, I, I'm not, so I'm going to clarify a couple of things. I'm not saying comparing apples to apples. I am saying each employee group, when we look at them, you, when you're looking at hourly employees and you decided, we decided they needed to be at $15 an hour, it was based off of other employees that, outside of the district that do like similar jobs. And so that's how that percentage was determined. When we look at what the teachers were asking, it was based off other nego, no, negotiated agreements, where our teachers fall, what the different aspects that they are responsible for. And they countered and went back and forth and came to tentative agreement last night on a number. When I look, when we looked at administrators, it was based off what other administrators are getting. And also looking and recognizing that the percentage that we are requesting for administrators is lower than both of the other employee groups. That's what I was referring to. I was not. So last year, for some administrators, it was higher than some employee groups. I looked at, that we, what is requested would not be higher than either one of those. So I recognize and understand what you're saying and understand that's the perspective. I'm just saying for us to continue to be competitive at a market level for all of those groups, the different. I'm just saying for us to continue to be competitive at a market level for all of those groups, the different groups. What is recommended by administration is three percent. We share what was recommended or come to you what has come to an agreement for negotiations and then the fifteen dollars an hour, what we share. So that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying, oh, because they got this, we should get the same. They're all different when you look at them, but based off of some outside factors. I also just want to be clear that I don't, I will not come forward and ask for something for administrators that is that I don't think is, is not appropriate. You know, I'm not just saying, well, they, but you cannot, you, you, we really have to get away from the divisiveness or penalizing administrators because that's where administrator salaries are in any district. And so you just, we have to look at that. And I really want us to collectively to move away from all of the, that, that kind of, and I'm not saying you're doing that, but I don't want this to become a, a, a conversation around making administrators feel like they're not valued. Every employee here is valued. Every employee here, we want to do something for, to make sure that we're competitive and we can recruit and retain them. And so that's where the three percent is coming from. The board can make whatever decision that they choose. That is the recommendation and the board can do whatever and we will operationalize it.
So I will just say, I did not come from a divisive place of that. I just came from a place where I just wanted to make sense. And I am not at all saying that I don't value our administrators. But I do want this, like, I want us to have the same amount of energy when it comes to negotiations for teachers. And I, those are not always public conversations. And so I will say that I just, I, that's just where I come from at this time. So.
And I respect that. And administrators don't negotiate their salaries. So I'm just going to, I don't know if the legal person is on here, I'm just going to caution. Please don't start to go down that road publicly because it could create, people will create their own stories around what conversations were had. So I will say publicly, every board member that I've ever spoken with values all of our staff members, teachers and hourly employees, and so does administration. And where we land on that and where conversations come about, that is very different because you are negotiating things. So we just have to be careful with the conversations or the saying, and, and Rachel, I completely respect you. But I know exactly what you're saying, but without actual information, people make up their own stories and it continues to create divisiveness. I know you're not coming from a divisive place, but without accurate information, people fill in the blanks and oftentimes with the worst case scenarios, which may not be true.
Ms. Humphreys?
I'd like to make a motion that we give administrators a three percent raise as recommended by the administration.
I second it.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. I'll open the floor up for questions or further discussion.
Uh, Dr. Stubblefield, have we had this conversation in executive session? Did I, I'll just ask like that.
About administrators?
Yes.
No, everything that we've discussed has been public.
Thank you. Well, I think perhaps we should have it in executive session first before we take a vote.
If you want to make a motion, I would gladly second that motion.
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
You can always make a substitute motion that trumps that.
Thank you, Ms. Clark, for that. Sorry, I forgot.
I make a substitute motion that we have an executive session on administrative salary before we vote.
Second.
Dr. Stubblefield, I don't know that that meets one of the exemptions because this isn't due to negotiations of the contract.
Of to not publicly discuss personnel.
I think non-elected personnel.
If you were talking about an individual or you're talking about multiple individuals possibly, but the only contract really that you would be possibly discussing and negotiating is my contract because our administrators are not a part of a, a union or any sort of that. And so unless we were talking about somebody specifically with a specific situation, I agree with Brad. I don't know who's on here from Brad's office. But I don't think we can just in general discuss administrative increases in executive session. We would have to discuss it publicly, which is why it's been brought forward.
I'm, I'm looking around to see if, uh, who from MVP might be on is. There's some
Okay, so if it's, if it's, if it's proper, let's say if it does not warrant executive session, then publicly you could display the, the salaries of the positions?
Those are all public on kansasopenrecord.gov. We could publicly put it up here. I don't, I mean, absolutely. You, everybody has access to that. Anybody who wants it can get it at any
Okay, you know, I mean, I understand that. I'm just saying then how we would be able to discuss it publicly with full public awareness of what we're talking about. I mean, yeah, if we could, I could go out and pull it up right now, but it's not, I guess I need you to share screens, but if it, if it's not, it doesn't warrant, then I'll withdraw the motion.
So can I ask the question of what we are trying to accomplish by having another conversation? Or even if you could put them on the screen, I just, I'm trying to understand what we are trying to accomplish because in my opinion, we wouldn't go line by line and say, well, you make this, you make that. I don't think that equates. So I, I'm trying to understand.
Well, I'll answer from my perspective. When you and I shared this last year, talk about market value. We don't, it doesn't appear that we're, that we are true to market when you're talking what an executive over here makes in a global world and what executive makes here in Kansas City, Kansas. And then with the market realities of Kansas City, Kansas. I don't think we're having a full discussion and honest discussion. Now that's me. And I shared that with you last year, with this, with this board last year. So then when you just say, okay, a, and we agreed on certain percentages. And I'm pretty sure it was maybe seven percent because there was a compromise on the part of the board. When then we saw the implementation of those pay raises, they were not limited to what the board approved. So when now you say, in my opinion, and what, what I'm basing my vote on, and, and again, I'm, I'm talking to the public, not knowing a position market, it pays X amount. And I'll say it again, this is not shiny mission. This is not blue valley. And, and the taxpayer of Kansas City, Kansas should not have to pay that salary. Okay. So, but I'll bring it back local to your original question. If you cared to, to know. Am I frozen? Or is Ms. Clark frozen?
I think she might be frozen.
Okay.
I think Ms. Clark was frozen.
It was me. I was, thank you. I was able to hear everything. So it, it was definitely me. Thank you, Dr. Wayne. I needed to, I wanted to be able to understand that. And so, Dr., my
Well, let me, let me, let me finish because you were frozen. At the end of the day, you're asking me to, to agree to two percent increases for a body of employees that I don't know, but they use a total fifteen to sixteen million dollars of our budget. I want, I would like to know then what that equates. As a board member, to talk with budget, I don't have the numbers in front of me. Now, I'm a visual learner. What do the numbers say? If you can show me the numbers, at least I understand what I'm voting on.
Okay. So, and, and I'm not asking you to vote on anything. I wanted to understand the perspective that
We, we are being asked to vote. There's, there's a motion on the floor, so we are being asked to vote, yes.
No, you said I, and so I wanted to make sure that we were not talking to me. We were talking to the people that were asking the question. So people, as, as was said earlier, people take things very literally. Dr. Dr. Stubblefield, my question to you is around, I'm not asking you to go down into the weeds of what you've done to, to figure this out, but at, asking the board to approve this, I'm sure some logistics have taken place. So from a high level perspective, can you talk through like?
Yeah. So Doc, with Doc, to Dr. Wayne's point, there were some people who got more than seven percent. And so what I am used to, and I don't know all the history of Kansas City, Kansas and how decisions were made. When the highest that someone would get with the three percent request is three percent, there are some administrators based off how they were adjusted last year, they will not get the three percent because of where they fall. So when we looked at that, it was, it's three percent. And so that there, and so to Dr. Wayne's point, without going down in the weeds, there will be some individuals based off where they are, that they will see a three percent increase. And there'll be others who would probably see less than one percent because of when they were adjusted last year, how they were adjusted and where they fall in comparison to other like positions here within the district.
Okay. So thank you for, thank you for that answer. So basically, if I understand you correctly, uh, the three percent would be your ceiling. As you're going through and you're comparing salaries to say midpoint, high point, what that looks like, the three percent would, uh, would be your ceiling. It's not your blanket for all employees. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correctly.
Thank you.
And the cost for that increase, and I don't have the total number for what administrators are. Tracy may be able to pull it up. The cause, the request for that for all administrators for this year is seven hundred and seven thousand dollars, which is what's on the slide.
Okay. And I think it's important, Dr. Stubblefield, that that be said out loud too, because how many times have people said, well, I heard a three percent and I didn't get a three percent. I got a, I got a this. And so I think that's also important to say that we're not approving three percent for all, that there's still some checks and balances that are in place when it comes to salary comparisons.
And if that's the case, the motion need to be, needs to be amended.
Well, that's the way I've always heard these be, I mean, to be honest with you, that's, and that's why I needed the clarity because as I've said on this board, I've never heard us talk about the threshold and who wouldn't and who would not. Things have been approved with saying one set percentage without that clarification. So
Exactly.
This motion is amended, that's different than what we've done in the past.
Okay, I don't even think, I, I understood.
Ms. Clark, I think if I'm understanding, you're saying it's up to three percent. And based on the salary charts and where people fell, that some, that's where that one percent comes in versus just because you're an administrator, you're going to get three percent, which is how the motion sounds. Um, and so I would echo that, you know, even if it hasn't been done in the past correctly, we do have the opportunity to move this, this horse forward in a way where we are making decisions that accurately reflect what we, our intention is and the practice that takes place within the district. So I would support that as well. I guess my other question and I, I'm not going to go into specifics, but we heard a presentation about what is needed for safety and security. We were told it's not available in the budget. And so are we going to find savings other places to address that request? Or how does this decision impact where those other dollars will come from? And I think it was somewhere in the four hundred thousand range of what we would need for safety and security.
If, if the board decided to do that, like any other year when the board did make, so for example, last year after the budget was approved, the board approved additional LEOs and SSAs. Once that is done, because that wasn't in the original, what was approved prior to that. We, on the backside, always go and operationalize it and make adjustments to the necessary budget and let the department people know if their budget is impacted by that. That historically is done in most districts. At the, in mid-year, there were years when the legislators said, you know, we can't fund this. I wasn't here in KCK. I'm speaking of a previous experience. In mid-year, we had to reduce our budgets by five percent. You make it happen. So once, if the board makes those decisions, whatever adjustments need to be made and/or the board could determine that it's going to come from, um, its reserve funds. But if it has to come from just the overall general budget, you adjust budget lines throughout the, but, uh, through that. Typically, that is done by administration, working with the various departments to say, we have to come up with this amount of dollars. We're looking to reduce your budget by this amount. What are the impacts and unintended consequences? And you figure it out. But, you know, the board was going to give specific direction around that, we would operationalize that.
Thank you for that clarity.
So I'm just going to jump in really quickly. I see Mr. Goheens joined us and in order to just clarify, and I just want to make sure we're all on the same page here. So there is a current motion on the floor and a second to approve a three percent raise for administration as recommended by, by leadership. Um, and, um, there was, there's conversation, Mr. Goheens, just to catch you up really quickly. There's conversation right now on whether that motion needs to be amended to say an up to three percent raise for administration. Or if it's okay with, with the way it's currently worded for a three percent raise for administration. The other question, um, the motion, substitute motion was, has subsequently been withdrawn. Uh, but there was a substitute motion to go into executive session to discuss the, um, the, the potential, the motion for a three percent raise for administrators, however, because A, it wasn't, it's not on the agenda. So we made, uh, not sure if we can go into an executive session since it wasn't noticed up under that. And B, whether it falls under one of the exemptions for an executive session. Since we're not talking about any specific personnel, uh, whether it even qualifies for one of those executive session exemptions. So.
Yeah. So on, on the, um, executive session issue only, uh, you got, um, two issues there. One is it, because the topics on, what matters is what's, what's noticed for the meeting, not the agenda per se. So my understanding was this was one of the items noticed for the meeting. So if there was a desire to go into executive session specifically to address like an individual or some other proper reason for an executive session, uh, you could amend the agenda, not the notice. You could amend the agenda to allow for that to happen if you wanted to talk about a specific individual. But if you're just talking globally about the total, uh, increase to administrator salaries across the board, then that would not necessarily be proper for executive session. And you would, if you're going to amend to go in for a specific reason, you would have to amend the agenda to do that. It could only do that by unanimous vote of the board.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity. And, and my understanding, uh, and please correct me if I'm wrong, um, other board members was that this was a generic request for a discussion of administrator salaries, not any specific personnel. So this would not fall under, under that exemption. Unless I'm mistaken from those who, um, requested an executive session.
No, you're correct. Um, and if it doesn't apply, it doesn't apply. But
I just wanted to make sure that
But help me understand, how was it noted on the agenda?
I, I don't have the agenda pulled up in front of me, but
It's a part of the budget.
Yeah. So there's two, there's two different, there's two different issues. If, if this is, if the topic is part of the discussion for the budget or is otherwise properly noticed up and there is some reason on that topic to go into an executive session to, to cover some specific issue under the topic, then it's still okay for the special meeting to add it, but it's not, if it's not part of that notice. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay.
So Dr. Stubblefield, is on the PowerPoint that is presented, is that the figure you're speaking of to?
Yes.
Seven hundred thousand?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the other question, Greg, just for clarity again, the, the motion, the current motion on the floor is to approve a three percent raise for administrators as recommended by, by, by staff. There was some, some brief conversation about what that actually means, and that it's not actually necessarily a three percent increase for all administrators, but potentially up to three percent. Some administrators may receive less than the three percent, dependent on where they are on the pay scale and, and in order to make sure that we stay competitive. And I, I believe that that's, that's accurate, that it's not a three percent across the board for the conversation. So just need clarity on if the current motion that's on the floor is, is okay, or does that need to be amended for language in order for clarity about what the actual motion that is gonna be voted on? Does that make, does that make sense? And Dr. Stubblefield, correct me if I, if I misspoke on any of those statements.
You did not. That is correct.
Yeah, so if, if it's not a three percent raised, I don't have the motions exactly worded. It sounds like it's worded right now as a motion of a three percent raise for administrators. Is that how it's worded?
Yes.
Yes.
That, that would, that would suggest to me that all administrators would be getting a three percent. So if it's gonna be a variable percent increase, and it's an up to, I think the motion should be modified to reflect that.
So it needs to be modified to say a motion for up to a three percent raise for administrators as recommended by the staff? Is that correct?
Yes, I think, I think so. If I'm understanding correctly, what the, what the issue is.
Does that sound right, Dr. Stubblefield?
Yes.
And my, my question, and I'm sorry, Janie, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry.
I was gonna admit, amend the motion to say that I moved that we amend the motion to, to reflect better the intent, which is up to approve up to a three percent raise for administrators as recommended by staff.
A second.
Right, so there's an amended motion and second on the floor. My question to Dr. Stubblefield again, just, I just wanna make sure that we are keeping with the intent of the recommendation that you brought forward. Would that still allow? That would allow you, I guess, as you're looking at the budget and you're looking at the potential increases, that allows you to accomplish what you were bringing to the board in terms of its intent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so my question then would be, does this change the budget in department, the line items? And I've asked those questions. I've only made it to like four or five departments, and I think I asked that question when it says administrator XYZ. Will that increase that line item?
I go ahead. Oh, yeah, it would. What, what is currently reflected in, in those documents is the current salaries. And so any motion to increase that would be an increase, yes.
Okay, so then these budgets would need to be revised before we approve them.
Right, and we're not asking for approval of the budget until like
I realize that, that is in this, also answering some of the questions I've, I've asked along the way. So that when we see administrator figure, that's not the correct figure we're looking at, that before we do approve, we'll have the correct figure. That was my question. Number one. And then secondly, as, does that motion mean an administrator will not get more than three percent?
Yes, because it says up to three percent.
Okay, so what I'm referring to, Greg, is the majority of the board voted last year, seven percent. In the adjustment, individuals receive more than seven percent. So I'm saying while the majority of the board may vote for three, up to three, is it correct that there will not be higher adjustments made? That's why I asked the question, Greg.
I, I think the only, I think the only way there would be a change in an individual's salary that would be above that, it would be if there was a change in position.
And or educational attainment, which is outside of this. So I will say that up to three percent, no one would get more than three percent. Last year, I think, to just add clarity to it, they in the meeting said, on average, this is what it was. I don't know what the motion actually was, but they were saying this would be the average, meaning that there could be some that's going above and some below. And that, if, when I watched it back, they said this would be the average increase, and that's why you had the very ability. I don't know what the actual motion was, but it was stated that this would be the average increase.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing that, I would ask Ms. Smith to please do a roll call vote. If you could, please just make sure you stake the motion that's on the floor, so we're all clear on what we're voting on, and then do a roll call, please.
Ms. Humphries amended the motion to increase that we, that the administrators will receive the increase up to three percent.
Mr. Lopez, I struggled to hear.
All right, yeah, you cut out there, Leslie. I'm sorry. If you could repeat that.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, now we can, yes.
I'm gonna have to turn off. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That the, excuse me, Ms. Humphries modified the motion that administrators will receive an increase up to three percent as recommended by Dr. Stubblefield and the staff.
Okay, thank you.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphrey?
Janie Humphrey, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda, Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, no.
Dr. Wynn?
And I will say again, we value and need all of our qualified, credentialed, highly effective administrators. But at this time, I don't have any numbers in front of me, and I must vote no. So thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, so I'm looking at the time, looking at our agenda. Dr. Stubblefield, I know that there were some questions that were emailed to us about specific department budgets. I'm wondering if it might be helpful. I know in the presentation that we have on board docs, there is, the departments are broken down on one of the slides. There's also a couple of, the, the library nutrition budget that's also included, and the timeline. I went, I'm wondering, you know, I'm looking at the, the screen to the board. Can we go ahead and, and get through, through that presentation just to allow staff to cover the information that they prepared for today, including the timeline for the budget and next steps of what's going to be requested of the board? Rather than diving into, right now, diving into those department budget questions that, that you may have specifically, not that we won't, but I just thought it would, might be good to have staff present what's prepared for today.
So I will say this, Mr. Lopez, actually is the same presentation that Tracy presented before. The only thing that has been updated is the timeline. Tracy, if you can share your, I'm not at my computer, so I don't know where stuff is. If you can share your screen with the timeline, that would be the only new piece of information. And then if there were any specific questions that the board had, either staff, if they didn't have the information today, we can take those down, or we can respond to them today. So the timeline basically is, we have some requirements by KSDE for what we require. So on August twenty third, there will be the presentation of the KSDE budget document to the board. On August thirtieth, we would have the notice of the hearing published in the newspaper. September thirteenth, before the regular board meeting, we would hold the public hearing. And during the meeting, and Tracy, if I'm saying this wrong, the board would vote on whether they approve the budget or not. And then September fourteenth, we would submit the budget to KSDE and the county clerk, because it's due by September twenty. Is what our recommended timeline is. That is correct.
Tracy or Dr. Stubblefield, can you remind me when the public hearing for the revenue root neutral rate is?
Yes, it'll be the same day, the September thirteenth. We will hold the revenue neutral rate hearing open and close that, and then ten or fifteen minutes, we'll then do the budget hearing. So we'll do them back to back.
Thank you.
And just as a repeat, Dr. Stubblefield, we are to really disregard the numbers that are presented under the heading Department Budgets twenty-two, twenty-three? Because those are not the correct.
They're, they were correct when they were, well, whichever one she said, but the, the increase for administrators wouldn't have been in there because there was no approval, and then the health insurance is on the one document. But we can update it once we have the additional information and provide that to you.
Well, and as well as some of the other just numbers are not the same.
Yes, I will get that updated.
Okay. And then did we ever get any clarification, information about the increases of the equipment for the nutritional service budget? Did I, did I miss that explanation?
I think, I think Lenora or somebody spoke to the, there were some additional equipment that either was expiring or they needed, and that's why it was there. And their budget, I think it was explained, and if Lenora or somebody's on here, they can't, that budget is very different because it's not like coming from general funds, it's based off of, who wants to jump in and explain it? They have to be within three, you know, they have to be in a certain, they have to spend that budget.
We know, we know it's a different animal. But with that in mind, the four hundred thousand dollar new equipment, can it be phased in? What was it? We did not get any further explanation of that question. And again,
Tracy and I was the one that asked that question originally, and it was told that that budget was mocked off of the previous individual that was in that department, and we were told that we would get more information. So the explanation was said about this is the budget, it has to be like this because we have to utilize those dollars that they can't carry over. However, the concern, and still concern that I'm waiting for the response, is the dup, the high increase in administration, as well as the equipment, as Dr. Wynn has brought up. And so I don't know, I don't see Lenora on here or the new person, but that information is still request. I mean, I have a lot of grace when it comes to people getting back to me. But it was told that we would get that information.
Yes, and I, and I will respond on their behalf. The new director has been here only a couple of weeks trying to get her feet underneath her. So she really hasn't had a good chance to go through the budget yet. But I will talk to her, and we will make those adjustments as needed for what she feels like is, is appropriate at this point, since it was not created by her. I think we did get an email just as this meeting was started with those questions, and we will get a response back to you soon, today, today or tomorrow, at the latest.
Thank you, Tracy.
Dr. Stubble, I'm sorry. I'll raise my hand.
No, 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 I, I was just saying, thank you, Tracy. Go ahead, Dr. Please.
You know,
Thank you, Tracy, too, for responding on their behalf. Sorry, Dr. Wynn.
No, no, and I just went through the, the nutritional budget, and that's the email that you received, because I knew, and I, as I said to Mr. Lopez, you know, folks will say, you didn't ask the question. No, we did ask questions for the meeting. On the Twitter, on the slide says twenty-two, twenty-three anticipated budget. Where it says four thousand eight forty-six, twenty-two, twenty-three base per pupil. Is that figure the multiplied by number of students equate to the six point nine million?
Tracy is pulling it up to respond.
You want me to ask it again?
This the one you're referring to?
Correct.
Yes, it's the six point nine. That's without weighting, but it's just a, you know, we, we estimate that at that point because we don't have the exact numbers, of course.
Okay, so the four point eight is the funding with the Consumer Price Index added, correct?
This year is not Consumer Price Index. This is the forty-eight, forty-six, and then next year for twenty-three, twenty-four, it will go to the CPI.
Okay, so this is just straight base aid multiplied by numbers without the weights?
I estimated the weightings as well.
So it's with estimated weights?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So you made a comment, or a comment was made about the budget. So it, in, in, am I correct to say, no matter what we budget, if the number stays at nineteen thousand students, this is the state aid estimated?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you rephrase that for me?
Sure. If we budgeted one dollar, because we get nineteen thou, because we have nineteen thousand students, we would get, still get six point nine million from the state.
Right.
Got it.
Okay.
And my only other question, on the public library budget, are there any positions that have not been filled or that are, and again, that's a separate budget, a separate tax entity, separate, separate, separate. But are there any salaries, any positions that either are not being filled, retired, or are all those positions filled?
I'm not sure. I know Carol, is someone from the public library on the meeting? I know Carol's not, she's not, she's on, she's out of the country. It may be a question we'll have to take back to her, because I don't know if anyone from the library saw. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there additional questions on either the timeline or anything specific to the department budgets? Again, I know there were some questions that we need to follow up on, that we'll make sure we get some responses to. I know staff are working on that, but if there are additional questions.
Well, staff doesn't work on the Board of Educ, our board budget, you know, I just requested, listen, where's the math? Because numbers are high, and there's not, I don't, I don't, I don't see the math behind it.
Right, I wasn't referring to the Board of Ed budgets. We haven't gotten to that again, yet. I was talking about the other department budgets that
I'll get to it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so if you do have other questions, and I know some questions were emailed out, and I believe the full board had those as well. So if there are other questions, please send those along to Dr. Stubblefield, and we will make sure that those responses get sent out to the full board. Okay. So we will continue along. And I think that was all that was requested today from that budget, and we, this will be revisited again. If there are questions on the timeline, you have that, please make sure you send those questions along. Next on the agenda is our Board of Ed budget. And so thank you, Dr. Wynn. Next on the agenda is our Board of Ed budget. Um, and so thank you, Dr. Nguyen, for sending the questions around the Board of Ed budget. Um, or you had, this budget was sent to you um, a few weeks ago. We've had uh, the opportunity to see it and discuss it a couple of times. Uh, Dr. Nguyen, I apologize, I was in a meeting right up until we got to this meeting, so I didn't see your email until um, right when I joined the, the meeting today. So um, regarding the math, um, so what I did, one of your questions was around travel. And how, why it was broken up, whether it's twenty-five thousand or forty thousand. The way I understood it and the way I broke it out in the travel budget was travel is one thing in terms of cost for hotel, um, travel, lodging, airfare, and so those costs, I included in the travel line item, which is line item number um, five. And then the other expense is dues and fees, uh, the way I was told and understood it was uh, cost for conference registrations um, would go, should be um, put under that line item, which is line item number seven. So that's why it was broken out. It looks like it's broken out into two different um, line items. And that's because it is, it is, it's one is for travel and lodging, the other is for conference registration fees. Um, and then the, the, and, and the way I came up with those, those figures and you're prob, you're, I'm sure you're right. It's not entirely perfectly accurate. Some of these, I had to do some estim, estimations. And I went online to look at airfare for where some of these um, conferences are being held at. And the conferences I included in travel were conferences that board members said that they really wanted to attend. So I, I based it off of um, information that the board sent to either Ms. Smith or to myself about conferences that, that we would want to attend. And, and the discussion that we had previously was that we would all have the opportunity to attend the NASB Con, National Conference and the KASB Conference. And then we would have an opportunity to attend um, one additional national conference that we wanted to. Um, so that could be like, I know some people mentioned the Cube Conference or the NSBA Equity Conference. Or if there's a different conference that board members want to attend, then that's, that's up to them as well. So I did my best effort, my best math to find conference registration costs, to find lodging costs, to find airfare costs, and allowable food costs. Um, and I tried to do some, my best math, uh, knowing that it's not going to be perfect. Knowing that not every board member is going to attend every one of the conferences, and that's my best estimation um, for those budget line items. So I can work through that.
Forty thousand is too much. Um, and again, I, I preface my, my emails by saying looking for cost savings, we need to start with us. Ten thousand, ten thousand dollars for membership is, seems excessive. Um, now, you know, listening to her five thousand dollars consultant, but those two, I, I
Let, let me clarify something really quickly, and I'm, and thank you for pointing that out, because you're right, and it may not have been um, I thought I included in the notes for the budget. But the forty thousand for dues and fees, that also includes the KASB membership, which I think is somewhere in the area of like twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars. So that's what, that's at least ha, more than half of that line item is the KASB membership.
Okay, then also, no, then, then the notes are not correct. I mean, the notes don't line up with your.
So I think what, I'll, I'll, I'll resend, I'll email the budget. Cause I think what I'm looking at may not be the one that's up on board docs, but I did send that, send out the one. Um, I did email the budget, the updated budget to everyone on a couple of occasions, so, but I'll resend it. And it shows what I'm looking at is that forty thousand includes the KASB membership, which is about twenty-three thousand dollars or so. Conference registrations for those three conferences for ten board members at roughly averaging.
Ten board members, we don't have.
I'm sorry, seven, seven board members, I'm sorry. Um, seven board members averaging around six hundred dollars per conference registration uh, for the NSBA or Cube or some other one. It also includes um, oh, and I'm drawing a blank on what LAF contract renewal is.
The little brochures.
Right, thank you.
Two thousand dollars, or that may be LRP, I'm not sure if it's. No, it has to be LRP subscription. But anyway, I mean, I'm not going to NSBA, I, I made that clear. I'm not going to Cube, I made that clear. So there's twelve hundred out, if that's your estimate per. I'm just saying, again, I prefaced, I'm looking for cost savings. And I'm saying if we, if you can take a scalpel and shave off some of the fat, that won't be a half a million dollars, our budget.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I said I, I can do that, um, knowing that, you know, you didn't want to attend those and.
And the same thing, the forty thousand, I think, that was in Dr. Stubblefield's budget was this forty thousand. So, you know.
No, that's not.
Excuse me, Don noted in the email, I'm only reading. So, so please correct.
No, she said that earlier in the year, there was a line in my budget that some board stuff that was charged to. And we may be saying the same thing, but it wasn't forty thousand in my budget and forty thousand over there. It got charged to the superintendent's budget because mistakenly.
Thank you.
Stayed over there and we never shifted it back, but it wasn't the forty thousand, it was a separate.
Yeah, and it was, it was not included in the board budget. So if you look at twenty-one, twenty-two board budget, that column under that line, it's zeroed out. Um, so because it, there was nothing charged to that line item. So it, it was charged to the superintendent's, but it should have been to the board.
And, and I think you, I, it, and it doesn't matter, but for, is this a suggested policy about the national, then one other national, or is that a suggested practice?
That was uh, based on cops, various conversations from the board in terms of what board members wanted to attend. I'm not making any decisions uh, on behalf of or making.
And that's, and that's my point.
Yeah.
That's my point.
This is based on, this is based on conversation and input. This is based on conversation and input from the board that said that they wanted to travel for various um, professional development opportunities. So in order to accommodate that, uh, I put together a budget that reflected that. And I brought that forward on a couple of different occasions, and there weren't too many questions.
No, 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 you're missing the point. The point is, you go to these or one other national conference. And that's what I'm saying, are you suggesting that, or whomever you spoke with, are we as a board suggesting that is our practice? That we will start encouraging that as a practice for all of our departments? Are we, you know, I mean, let's think about, I mean, I, I asked you again, when we look at food costs, we've made a policy, now are we applying that policy to the budgets, all budgets, are we? Do the people know when they make up the budget, that's what is the policy now? Did we, I guess, I guess, I have to ask you, did we make that as a policy, or was that just a practice, suggested practice?
What?
Have we voted on that?
So, I.
Yeah, that's a policy, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Russell.
No, I just was gonna chime in real quickly. I, I think that was a practice that was used to create my, just my own personal take. That was a practice used to create the budget numbers. I think we have had multiple years where one year the board did not travel. Or the last couple of years, the board didn't travel, we went back to traveling. However, the cost of traveling is high, it has highly increased. And so you can't base that off of three years ago when the board traveled. And so I think the practice, I don't think that was Randy saying that, no, you can't do anything outside of these three. Um, as we all know, there is board policy that says it should come before the board for professional development. Um, I also just, Dr. Nguyen, I, I, I would just be cautious of, of making the practice for which we created our budget, the practice for staff. As a person that knows the true value of professional development, I do not want to limit folks the opportunity to go and um, learn or engage with like professionals. Um, but I also understand where you're coming from, from the sense of the budget and how expensive it is to travel. However, I also just wanted to hear from you as you're going through these budgets. And likewise, I'm doing the same uh, in looking at some of the expenditures, the overages, the underages. That's probably not the right word, but um, when you're looking for savings, wha, what, where do those savings go? Because we still have to balance the budget. So what is your idea of where these savings would go for these things that you're, that you're identifying?
Asking questions, I'm only asking questions to go back to rich, yeah, to go back to the, the first question. I was the manner in which many of board members respond to my budget questions characterized me, maybe not by design, as, as the devil, okay? Let me put it like, and let me just put it out there. So in view of that, it, as an organization, many organizations, and I'm only a part of the, and the Community College Organization. There is a travel policy that covers everyone. There are certain um, provisions of grants that stand alone. So we know that, but where some departments by definition have opportunities, they know in advance it's going to happen, they plan for it, they budget for it. So sometimes organizations that, that I am an employee of develop a, and Greg is the lawyer for the college too, so he can sit there and smile. Um, but, but some, some travel policies, and especially we did it as an organization with COVID restrictions, nobody traveled. I don't care if it was the, if it's the best professional development program in the world. But, but, but that's the context I'm speaking of, that when we make policies, if you want practice, fine. But let's, let's talk about it and you budget for it, all right?
Or not a good practice.
Yeah, all should have opportunities to travel, all should have opportunities to bring in consultants, all should have that opportunity. But there's got to be policies to govern, provide equity, all right? That, I'm, I'm finished with that conversation. The second thing, what am I, and this, and it's funny, that's kind of a question that Janie asked a hundred years ago. What are you looking for? I'm looking for places that are soft costs that if you didn't spend it last year, and you're adding two million dollars this year, can you phase in that money? Can you, can you slowly save this? And, and I've never been cl, unclear, never murky, you always know where I am. I'm interested in reducing the total budget, not send it over there in contingency, but reducing the total tax burden. I've never um, um, kept that as a secret. So that's what I'm looking for. Those costs that don't hurt anybody, that don't cut anybody's salary, that you won't go crying and screaming and gnawing your gnashing your teeth, but that could be an exit, two hundred thousand dollars in paper. Maybe we could cut it back to a hundred fifty thousand dollars in paper, you know? And there's fifty thousand, because I said it in my emails, we know we've got some security costs and we know we got extra costs. Second, shift that to that category, you don't have to increase the budget. And, and again, I said to him, Dr. Stubbe, Phil. Tracy was not on the screen, but it, it was not appropriate, in my opinion, for staff to say any staff, and, and I referenced you, Tracy, so I'm not going to say anything about you, uh, with you not, with me not owning it. Staff provides data. They don't provide opinions. And when the board members ask staff, in my opinion, an opinion, Greg is different. He's a provide, supposed to provide us legal advice, but that, then, in my opinion, we are putting staff in a difficult position when we say, what do you think? You put them in a difficult position. So answer you to circle down, I'm looking for the cost savings, and we know we've got some cost over here. If we don't reduce the budget, we don't spend anymore. So that's what I, I meant by what I said.
Thank you. So, um, and I'm looking at the time, and thank you for the conversation, everyone. Um, I will just say um, that I, I think as a board, and I know this has been said several times um, in, in other conversations, budget conversations, um, I, you know, we've named our finance committee. And I think as a board, uh, we have to collectively discuss what our goals are around um, our budget and finances. And if it is to reduce the budget as a board, we have to make that decision. And then the finance committee can really work through that, through the, throughout the year, um, to bring forward recommendations of how to do that um, in a thought-out process. Um, and so, uh, so, so I, but I think, you know, I hear exactly, I hear what you're saying, Dr. Nguyen. I just want to just assure like that, we're, we're, we need to have that conversation of what is our goal? And I think that's what's going to happen. Part of that conversation is going to happen in our August board development conversations around our, our goal setting, our strategic planning and revisit, revisiting what we want to see. And then when we talk about our committees, um, what the goals are of those committees should align with the overall goal of the board. So those conversations need to happen. And I think that the finance committee can definitely look at whatever the, the board states our priorities are. Um, the, that committee can really own that and work through it with staff. I would say that we often, though, as a board, we do look to our administration for recommendations. I, I don't know about opinions, but uh, they're in a day-to-day. So I think it is fair to say that we, we look to staff who are in the day-to-day, um, who are experts in this, in this work um, for their recommendations, and that's what they often provide. So I, I, I would differ a little bit, and maybe that's, maybe we're saying the same thing, but I.
Yes, I didn't say recommendation, I said opinion.
So I would just say that oftentimes, we look to the experts who are in it to ask for their recommendations on, on, on things as we move forward. So um, I will go back to the board budget unless, if there's any other thoughts around the bu, the board budget specifically. Please send those along to us, I'll go back and I will take a scalpel to it like it's been requested and see where we can trim a few things here and there. Um, again, I, I hear what, what the conversation was. So I will go back and do my best um, to, to, to bring that back forward. Um, and readjust, make readjustments, or just, you know, make sure that there's enough narrative so everyone sees where, where these numbers came from. So, but I, I'll go back to do that. So thanks for the, for the input. So we'll continue on with our agenda. Next up is sorry. Next on our agenda is policy review. Um, so first up is a second read. I will just state that policies JGG and policy IF, we had tabled those for a later conversation. Those are regarding transportation, textbook and instructional materials. Um, so those are not up for a second read today. But the other ones, I think all of the others that are noted are up for a second read. So policies JCAC, JGCD, JBC, KBA, BDA are up for a second read today. I know Mr. Goheen's on here, is there anything um, that we need to discuss on these, Mr. Goheen?
No, I did, you pulled the ones off that um, were tabled for, I think, the August meeting, if I recall correctly.
Correct. Okay, so is there a motion to approve a second read for those policies?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Atwin, yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Next agenda item, uh, to accept modified KASB policy JHC as a third read.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved in seconded, any questions or discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Atwin, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. Next item is the recommended to accept. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is the recommended to accept modified KASB policy DF, DFAC as a third read.
So moved. Second.
Moved in seconded. Questions or discussion? Singa, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Win.
Atwin, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item D is recommended to accept modified KASB policy GAA as a third read.
So moved.
Moved in seconded. Is there questions or further discussion? Singa, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Win.
Atwin, yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Last, a policy agenda item E is recommended to accept modified KASB policy ING as a third read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Further questions or discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Win.
Atwin, yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. So that's all on our agenda today. Again, just a reminder, as I think several board members and Dr. Stubblefield had mentioned, board members, if you haven't had the chance, please go back in and complete that survey that was sent to you all, just so that we can compile everyone's responses. I think that would still be very helpful for us all to kind of see what those, and, and again, it's required for, for us. So just make sure you go in and, and complete that survey. If you need some assistance, please reach out to staff, and they will help you out with that. Again, just make sure you're looking out for your emails in case there's some requested information from you. I know Ms. Smith is looking for information about the KASB Conference. If you're interested in attending, which is in Wichita in November, please let her know so that we can get the group registered for that and accommodation set up. Just a shout out to Ms. Rachel Russell, who's going to be presenting at KASB. So we're really excited to have one of our, one of our own board members give a presentation. So hopefully we'll have a chance to attend, and we'll get to hear more about your presentation and, and, and learn from that. So congratulations for being accepted, and we're looking forward to that. Just a couple of other quick items. I know we've got a couple of board development opportunities coming up in, in August, so hopefully you have those on your calendar as well, so that we can, those will be meetings with Dr., with Marcia from KASB to follow up on the trainings and development that we've had. Board, I did send you an email with some of the items that we likely will cover, but I do want to make sure that if there's input from you in terms of what you would like to see covered or things that, that may have been put on hold that need to be covered during those times, please send those to me and, and to Ms. Smith so that we make sure that, that you have some input in that as well. As the agenda's being developed, we'll make sure that we share that with you so that you have some input on what that looks like. Lastly, I know there was a, a request to have an HR or a special meeting to approve some of the new hires. So please look for an email or a message from Ms. Smith on that date and time to see if we can at least, to see if we can get some board members to attend, to be able to approve some new hires before the start of school, and that'll be before the next board meeting on August night. So, to be on the lookout for that. And that'll be a virtual Zoom meeting, and it should be pretty relatively quick meeting. So I think that's it for now. Thank you so much, everybody, for the conversation, for the discussion, questions. Again, congratulations to everyone at Central Office and to all of our staff who are doing, who are having a great summit this week. Thanks for all you're doing. I know it's a lot of work and a lot of time, but it's so worth it, and I've heard amazing things about it. So again, thank you, everybody, and this meeting is adjourned. Have a great rest of your day.